Just waiting on Jake and Erin. Well, we're gonna start. Good evening. I'd like to call this...
He changed the battery so it wouldn't work.
Oh, it's just for me? I'm just gonna talk louder. Would our students like to start us off, please? Thank you, guys. Before we start into the agenda, at this time, the Board of Education would like to acknowledge the tragic events involving a Berlin High School staff member. Our thoughts and condolences go out to the Karis family. And we'd also like to thank Berlin Public Schools Administration and staff who acted quickly to provide support and staff to the students. We also have an additional thank you to Meriden Public Schools for providing support to the Berlin Public School system. So, Brian and your team, thank you very much. With that said, we'll move to welcoming our newest student representative, Mr. Ryan McGowan. Ryan, welcome. And our returning student representative, Jenna Smalling. So, we look forward to working with you for this school year. Welcome. And out of the gate, we're gonna start with a student presentation from the Emma Hart Willard School.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Willard School is thrilled to kick off our first presentation of the 2019-2020 School Year. Relationships are paramount to student success. As Daniel Comer says, "No significant learning occurs without a significant relationship." So, last year, the district hosted a book club, and it was based on the book Being the Change by Sana Ahmed. And in that book, it gave us an idea that our fifth-grade teachers implemented of creating identity webs. So, here to tell you more about that is our fabulous fifth-grade team with teachers and students.
If you're right here in front, they can have their backs to us, so the parents can all see. That's fine. But you can go right out to here. They'll just have to turn to us occasionally.
So, hi, everyone. We are Willard Fifth Grade Team, so there are the fourth and fifth-grade teachers. Mrs. Timmel, Mrs. Tarver, Mrs. Frisch, and I'm Miss Prezavento. And we're so excited for our students to be sharing this presentation with you. They are going to run the entire thing, so they're going to be introducing themselves and talking about our identity webs. So, can our first group talk about the very first thing we did with our identity webs? I'm gonna introduce Michaela, Augusto, and Abby.
Hi, I'm Michaela, and an identity is something like your personality.
An identity... Wait, I'm Abby. An identity is anything about yourself. And in my class, we made a web about what everyone in my class thought identity meant.
Salud. My name is Augusto, and in my class, we gathered up in partners, and we shared things about us, like I shared to my partner that I'm from the Dominican Republic and speak Spanish.
So, that was our first activity. We talked about what identity means, and you can look over. We have some charts over there. We'll be brainstorming just what an identity means in general. So, we have two amazing students, Ava and Camden, who are gonna help us out with our next activity that we did.
Next, we read two books, one with Rosie Vera Engineer. We read out loud, and then we jotted down some identities that she was.
Next, we read Iggy Peck, The Architect, and one of her character traits was she was very creative and hardworking.
And lastly, I'm gonna introduce some students, and they're gonna talk about the last process that we did with our identity web. So, here is David, Reagan, and...
Hi, my name is Camden, and we brainstormed our ideas. So, we made a rough draft, and we jotted down like things that we might wanna say, like, for example, like maybe like our language, like our personality, like what you enjoy and like.
I'm Reagan, and the next thing we did was got into groups and discussed some things that we could put down on our identity webs. And... Hello, I'm David, and finally, we made a final draft and added every sort of emotion and character trait that describes us and our identity. Like, for example, honey. I wrote that online because every... Almost every day, I come to school, and I make one of my friends laugh.
So, now, we're gonna give each student an opportunity. They're gonna share one or two things that you might not know about them by looking at them. Because when we talked about identity, we did talk about it being physical traits. So, when you look at me, you might be able to tell that I'm tall, that I'm brunette, but there are so many things that you might not know about me, and that's what's really helping build those relationships. So, each student chose a couple things that they'd like to share with you.
And also, what is really neat about their identity webs is some of them, you can tell they actually drew things that they liked or something about themselves, not just their name and a typical web that you would see up here. So, they kinda made it creative to themselves. So, go ahead, Michaela.
Two things that I did was that I created mine to look like a flower because I'm making a hybrid flower, and I also like to frown.
One thing about me is that I'm bullish. You definitely can't tell that about me.
One thing that you can't see about me is that I am very, very loud.
One thing about me is I'm very athletic, and I'm a Yankees fan.
One reason why I drew mine as a Starbucks cup is because I love Starbucks, and I love to play lacrosse.
So, one reason... Well, I drew mine as a football field because I like to play football, and I also play the piano.
Two things you might not know about me are that I play the clarinet, and I love to be Irish.
I didn't really have a theme for mine, but I basically did every word was a different type of style.
So, what's one thing we might not know about you?
Oh, yeah. I probably don't know about me, but I really like enjoy horror movies.
Don't use movies. He loves. Something else that came up when we were having them group up and pair up with each other is they were also pinpointing things that they forgot to write about themselves. So, it was a wonderful way to keep the students, really building that classroom community, getting to know one another, especially if we had new students come and join our school this year. So, they really did a fantastic job, and they found things that they had in common, and it was great to just learn about each other, especially in the first couple weeks.
And people you might not think you have things in common with you really do have commonalities with.
I think we're so excited as teachers to be able to use this as well. We talk about relationship building so much within our school community and within our classroom community, but we're so excited to learn so much about these kids and learn how we can support them as educators, how we can inspire them, and how we can help them throughout our school year. So, it has really been such a positive experience. Did you guys like doing this?
Yes.
And they're creative.
Yeah.
Very creative.
I hope you can see each of their personalities jumping right off the page. That was really what we were going for.
So, it's only September 9th. You've done all this by now. You guys are in for a very busy year. Now, I have a question. What is the most interesting thing that you learned about somebody else?
One really interesting thing is that one of my friends is from... Has moved a lot, so I got to learn a lot about places that she was. So, there's a lot of stories to tell.
Great, thank you. That's a good one. Anybody else? All right, I know, it's after-school hours. We'll let you off the hook. Thank you very much. Any questions for this... Any other questions?
I'm just impressed. One of the most difficult things in life is to develop speaking, to stand in front of people that you don't know and to speak, and you guys did phenomenally well. Good job.
Okay. Thank you very much. For all the students, standing right behind the teachers is a tray of cookies. Please make sure you help yourself, because otherwise, Mr. Oaks has to eat them all.
Aren't all the students staying for the entire meeting? I mean, that's why they're here.
Look at the looks on their faces. What? Are you kidding? So, if tonight is the first night of homework, then we will take a very brief five-minute break, so that if there's any board members wanna talk to the students before they go, and then also any parents who would like to take their students home to do all of their homework. Oh, then you can stay. You can stay, then. What's that? The whole thing. All right. So, five minutes?
So the school year is off to a good start. And upbeat registration was last week and nearly 300 kids signed up.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, pretty impressive. And the first meeting was tonight, actually. So a lot of kids showed up there, too. And then last week in advisory, we had our summer reading celebration. So we talked about the books that we read and our learning experiences.
And then last Wednesday, Mr. Boyle, he announced the school musical in the fall play. And the school musical this year is lame is. And then, and then the fall play is a midsummer night's dream. And yeah, those are both going to be really good. And then this past Saturday, the cross-country team, both boys and girls, did very well. The girls placed fifth overall and then the boys were sixth overall.
Thank you very much. Good stuff.
Can we find out anything about Ryan? I don't know anything about.
No.
Tell us about yourself.
Ask away. See, I told you they put you on the spot, didn't I? I warned you.
So I'm a junior this year and I'm a part of the soccer team at Berlin High School. And I participate, I'm in band and chorus. And then I also do the musical and stuff. I really like that.
Have you grown up in Berlin your whole life? Do you have any siblings?
Yeah, I have a sister. She's a freshman this year.
One on tree school that do audio.
Hubbard.
Oh, where's the Hubbard forever?
Yeah, there he is. There he is. You're not too proud, are you? Okay, thank you very much. We look forward to working for you, with you all year.
Working for you.
Well, we are, we are. We do work for you, so it's technically correct. Committee reports. We have.
Communications meeting.
Communications.
This evening, the communications committee meeting. The communications committee had a meeting right before the meeting. We talked about the Cabe Board of Distinction, which we are on track to receive this year at the Cabe Conference in November. So throughout the summer, we have been working with Brian to make sure we have accomplished and achieved certain things. And Brian has also submitted for two other Cabe Awards, the Communication Awards. So we'll see if we get those as well. So we've been trying to make sure we're utilizing our Cabe membership and getting the most out of it. And hopefully, we will get some distinction in November. And if you haven't registered for the Cabe Conference, it is always a great experience. And I feel like I've gone every year and I feel like every year on Fridays, the board members that do go, we always get a little closer. We learn a little bit more about each other. We have some time to talk. So I believe I've registered, so responded that and get registered for that. We also talked about our upcoming Berlin Citizen column. So we have September and October all laid out of what we're going to be submitting. So keep an eye out for the Friday emails. I know last week I sent it on a Saturday. I'm not quite in school mode yet. So I was a little bit behind the clock on that one. So you'll be getting them Saturday as soon as I submit them to the Citizen. If you guys have any questions, always feel free to reach out regarding the columns. And that's all we talked about. We worked and talked about the communication policy, but we tabled that for the next meeting.
Thank you, Julia. Cabe Conference is November 15 and 16 for your calendars. And I echo what Julia said, that those board members that have attended in the past, I think all of them have come back with something new. And it is a good opportunity for us to spend some time together outside of this formal, formal sitting. So I encourage you to participate if your schedules allow. Next up, we have correspondence to the board.
No correspondence to boards either.
The only correspondence that I have actually came from Niask. I received a copy of the letter that went to Arlene Eustace from the Niask Committee. And in essence, highlighting the things that were accomplished with the high school, congratulating us on our efforts and getting through stages one and two of the accreditation, correct? And they look forward to doing the final steps coming up in the future. So congratulations to you and your staff. I know that you all have been working very diligently on moving the school forward. We're going to get a report from the superintendent later this evening on the Niask report. But congratulations. Well done. Next up, we have audience of citizens. Is there anybody who'd like to address the Board of Education this evening in the audience of citizens? Since I see all administrators and no Berlin residents, I'm going to guess that we're going to go going once, twice, and close this evening. We will go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is in your, was in your packet. Is there anybody who would like to add or remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Look at that, nine. All right. We will move to new business. We'll go to Erin to talk about the new staff orientation.
Certainly. So the week before school started officially, we welcomed new teachers at our annual new teacher orientation. We welcomed nine new teachers and four long-term substitutes, some who will be with us for the entire school year. We have at least one new staff member at every building in the district. We did something a little bit different this year in that we set it up so that it was two full days of orientation. But our district teacher leadership council, which is made up of teachers across the entire district, ran the entire day, second day of orientation for the first time. And the reason for that was that, you know, from the work that they did last year, that the district leadership, the teacher leadership council made a specific effort to reach out to all staff members who were new to the district, whether or not they were a part of the team or were like first and second-year teachers. Anyone who was a new teacher to the district was matched with a partner and had a series of activities across the year, including some social events and some drop-in sessions and some support sessions around specific topics to help them feel welcome and included into the Berlin community. So this year, we took advantage of the fact that that structure was up and running very well last year. We ran Monday as a full day with Matt coming to welcome the new teachers on behalf of the Board of Education. We talked about purpose, passion, and pride and where that comes from and how that fits into our district improvement planning efforts. They got an overview of professional learning opportunities, of the team program, the teacher evaluation program, a little bit on computer security, people services overview and human resources, and that was just before lunch. They also had time to have lunch with the district administrators and get to know the administrators a little bit, and then spent time in individual buildings being oriented by their individual principals. On the second day, the teacher leadership council picked up the work. They read an article by Mark Brackett called Emotions Matter, which is part of the push for emotional intelligence in the schools. Many of you had the opportunity to hear Mark speak last year. They talked about things such as building positive relationships with students from day one, proactive communication with parents. They talked about what does it look like to be a contributing member of the school community. The BEA came and did a presentation. And they also talked to them about technology uses, including Schoology and the kinds of things that are available and our social media guidelines. So they had a good two full days. I don't know very many districts across the state that turned part of it over to the teachers, like that biggest piece of it over to the teachers. And I think it sends a very positive message to the new teachers about their colleagues welcoming them into the community and also the value that we put on teacher leadership at our district.
Any questions for Erin? So I will say that that particular morning, those teachers that were here for orientation were very excited to be here. I mean, you could feel the enthusiasm of them choosing us and us choosing them. And we're really ready to get going. Also, before we move on to the next agenda item, I think that it would be wrong for me not to mention that this year's convocation was really well done this year. The work that you and your staff put into getting all of that ready was really fantastic. Between the students with the crawl presentation and modifying it to apply back to the teachers and the interaction and all that was really great. So thank you for kicking off our school year in the way you did.
That's very positive.
And just to kind of echo that, my wife came home just ecstatic. Said it was the best convocation she's ever been to, that's including both districts she's taught in. And said it was just a great way to kick off the school year. Everyone was happy and joyful and really enjoyed having students there. So it just worked very well, so thank you.
We did this setup a little bit differently this year in that because, as you know from adjusting the calendar, that we had three days before the school year started. So we kicked off Monday with a whole day of professional learning with teachers leading most of the sessions across the day. And I think that energy of the teachers learning from their colleagues, like started off Monday on a great high and then we rolled right into Tuesday morning. And there was very positive energy around the convocation.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Next up, we have facility related updates, summer maintenance, project updates, et cetera, et cetera.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of things here. Are you do recall at the end of our last fiscal year, we had decided to go forward with a lot of efforts that we were hoping to get through during the summer. Two of them that already started before the end of the year was, well, one was the security festivals. They are substantially complete at this point and operational. There was some punch list system items that I'm sure all the principals here can, we talk about if we let them, but we won't. But everything is. They did a tremendous job. These things are exactly what you'd think they would be. And they, I think they present very, very well to the community and our schools. And again, they're going to help with security naturally. The second that was already going on is, of course, the football field turf job. That is completed. I didn't get a chance to play in it unfortunately, but it's great out there. I know they're using it. It looks great. And I think that, you know, we've been waiting for that for many years. So it's nice the town invested in that. Things that we've started since the end of the last fiscal year, which is basically June 30th, the Blast Classroom over at McGee. That's a classroom that is being put together for the Blast class, obviously. And it's one of the major efforts we have with special education. I was out there today to see it. It isn't completed yet. It is on track to be completed by the end of October. It's a big job, you know, and it's taking an entire bottom room and a half worth and making it into a facility for our middle, our middle schoolers that are in the Blast program. So we're going to be very, very proud of that. But it's a lot of work to be done. They didn't get started until probably a month ago and they'll be completed in a month, so they're doing a great job. This is, this is our facility group along with, obviously, professional contractors. A few other things. We decided to refinish all the gym floors, something that has not been done in a long, long while in Berlin. Those of you that have played basketball or coached or anything like that, and I know, I know he didn't mention it, but Ryan used to play basketball for me over here. And if you remember, when we were on the McGee floor, it's, it was dark brown. Okay, just because for years and years, they were just polishing it, putting things on it, making sure that it was good to play on. But these floors are not really looking that, supposed to look that way. What has happened is they've stripped all of them in all, in all the schools except for Willard, which I'll talk about for a moment. And now they are light, light brown. They look brand new. It lightens up the whole place. So a lot of work, a lot of good, a lot of good money spent there. And I want to say that one of the people that was a great proponent of that right off the bat, because I'm usually the guy that has to find the money, was the superintendent. He said the gym floors haven't been done in a while. Let's do them now. They're great. If you get a chance to go in, they're tremendous. We didn't get a chance to do Willards because we had too many things going on at Willard in the summer with summer school and a number of other things. So we're going to get that done either in the Christmas break, the April break. That's what we're shooting for anyways. But those, you wait till you see the reviews you're going to get by having people walk into those gyms. We also redid the two at the high school, which you would say, you know, why it's relatively new. They get used tremendously well. I mean, when you got a chance and you have some money to do that for athletics or anything else, you get it done. So you should be very proud of that. We did also decide to paint the entire gym inside at McGee. That did not get done this summer. We were hoping it was going to, but very frankly, coordinating at the same time that they were finishing all the floors didn't work out quite so well. So we're going to hopefully get that done if we can during one of the breaks. But that'll make that gym look just tremendous. We have the money set aside for all this, by the way. So it's just going to sit there and wait for us. Cameras and video management system at McGee. Tremendous investment, one that we needed for security. That's completed. Willard and Hubbard camera systems, cameras and their systems have been put in. It's all substantially complete and operational. We also put in new district wireless IT infrastructure, which Craig over there was very, very instrumental in putting together for us. He's our IT director. That's all substantially completed. This is all the summer operational. We did a bunch of new wellness equipment at McGee, which was needed very much. That has been ordered. It's ready to be delivered. We're just getting the padding on the floor done before it gets put in. That's going to be great for McGee. If you've been into the McGee cafeteria, we have all new tables in there. Interesting thing about the tables, it wasn't just the fact to buy tables for the sake of wanting something new looking. We were, both custodians and our safety director and a fire marshal asked that we change those tables because the ones that were there were too difficult to move and they had to be moved every day for different activities. And people were, actually, guys were getting hurt moving these things. They were so old and heavy. So now we have new ones that flip up, move, get out of the way, and everybody's happy. So it's very, and it's very, very nice. And lastly, we had new phones put in all the elementary schools that had been planned for the last couple of years. That was completed this summer. So very, very nice summer for that. There was also other miscellaneous upgrades and other things that happened to all our schools. So it was, it was a very, very good summer for facilities. And lucky enough, we had the assets to go ahead and do it. The last thing I would say is not to do it this summer, but we have already started to work on a capital plan. Capital plan, you remember, is the part, a very large investment, mostly in our facilities. It has to be done. We're working with the town to get our plan ready for 2021 year. Gets done that early. So we've got our list going. We're working with facilities. And the principals were all really great in a very short period of time to provide a list to the business office so we can start compiling things for our budgets. So it's a good time. We're getting a lot done, spending some money, but that's what has to happen.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions for?
Just a couple of things. Number one, the field stage looks great. It does. So we had, there was a, the girl soccer team had a jamber yesterday. I mean, teams from Old Saybrook, Manchester, Southington.
Great show.
Waterbury, everybody. And they were all commenting what, how beautiful it was. So that's, that was what we all needed. And the gym floors do look good. I saw them in the high school. And speaking of the high school, I know that there was some action taken by the public building commission with regards to some closeouts. I know that there was some settlements with Ferguson, Electrical, and a few other things. If you wouldn't mind commenting, where do we stand with that? Is the project itself closed out?
All I, most of the information that I've received to date is from the paper.
Yeah.
I haven't had a chance yet to work with the building commission. We didn't get a report or even be asked anything yet. I'm sure we will because, as you know, we have to accept the facility. We haven't had anything formal from the public building commission. I'm hoping within the next week or so to find out what actually the settlement was, whether it affects what we're doing, whether, what kind of money may be left because of the settlement, because that's what we're trying to figure out. I don't know those answers yet.
I know like for Ferguson, some of that was taken out of contingency. I think that they had negotiated an amount, I don't know if recall the exact amount. It was like a hundred and something thousand, wasn't it?
It sounds like, I thought it was 250,000, but it was 125.
Maybe that's.
And 125, it was split.
So I mean, be curious to see where that stands and what, if any, funds are left over. So maybe we can get something from the PBC to figure out where they stand. That's number one. Number two, you mentioned the capital plan going forward.
Yes.
And I'm curious if there's any talk about, or if it's in the plan with regard to turfing the field and back of the high school.
I have seen on the list, that was already on the list for one of the years going forward, to do the turfing between the track and the high school. Now, I can't, it obviously wasn't in this year because it didn't get done. It's on the, you know, if you look at these, if you look at these capital plans, they're, they go out 10 years. So a lot of things get on the list, what the real key is where, what year they're in. So that's in there somewhere. There's a committee this year, which is, which is brand new. It's called the Capital Leadership Management Committee, which I happen to sit on and a few other people do also. And, and some people from the, from the finance board, like Mark Holmes sits on it. A lot of people from facilities, so on and so forth. That committee now is going to receive everybody's requests, work with that as a committee to come up with something and then present. So there'll be a lot of discussion on things that are already on the list and things that need new to be on the list.
So I'd just be curious if we are truly closing out the high school project and if we're going to be asked to accept that. Where do we stand budgetarily as far as funds expended versus what was bonded and what's left over and what ability we have to utilize those funds? The field is outside the parameters of the overall school construction project, but those funds could be reauthorized because it's still on the property for other improvements, whether they be at Sage or at the high school.
You're, you're correct. I mean, any building project I've been involved with, when there's money left over, anything that looks like it's close to what you're doing from an educational standpoint or an athletic standpoint to do with that facility can be used. Again, that's a, that's a move that the public building commission has to discuss. Support on those things would be great. We've waited now a long time to have this thing be done. Now we've got to put on the information we need, once we find out what the money is and who's got what plan. But you're totally correct. Those things should be all on the table.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. Next up, we have an update on the summer program. I see that Linda's not here, so I'm going to guess Cindy and Michelle are. Are on. We'll just get it from this side, Jeff.
Here, now you have asked.
Give Jeff whatever he wants.
So what, what you have in front of you is the numbers for summer school, like we usually share with you, what our final count ended up being. We talked about in the spring where our projections were. And then on the back, I just, we just put the qualifications for summer school, just as a reminder if you had any questions. Overall, summer school was very successful. We had a lot of new changes with more of our, our extended program. Our Blast program started up at the middle school this year, which it hadn't been there before. That was the first year for that. So, and so that was, that was a big success. The students enjoyed being there. They enjoyed trying to figure out the middle school and where things were. And I think based, well, you're at the middle school, but from what I've heard from some of the parents, it made the transition to start the year there much more comfortable and successful for them.
And not only the Blast kids, but any of the incoming sixth graders. If you were there during summer school, they had an opportunity where they explored the building and they practiced opening their lockers. So they felt like they were 10 steps ahead of any other student who was coming in on the first day of school. So it's really nice to see their excitement and energy because they really felt like they were proud at the end of that. Not only on top of that, but the learning that was going on. And then just really getting the Blast program. It was the first year we had a five-week program up at the middle school. And that went really, really well. So really proud of that.
So overall, for summer school, we had predicted or recommended summer school for 123 students. 106 students attended. We also anticipated needing 60 teachers and paraprofessionals. We only used 48 for the, for the summer. We were able to condense in some areas and combine. So our preschool and kindergarten, so usually they go to the next grade level. They're going up. We had a very small preschool group, so we kept any of the students who would have been moving to kindergarten with their peers that they had been with for the year and did a kindergarten preschool group. High school was a 912 group. So we were able to cut back on, in some of those areas. We, in the Blast program at the elementary school, we were able to utilize an RBT as an extra set of hands instead of having to have two teachers in that program for those students. So we were able to really make some changes in our staffing in that way. Some exciting things that happened this summer is at the elementary level, our Blast students do a lemonade stand every Fri-, Thursday, Friday, Thursday. One of those, I think Thursday. Every Thursday afternoon, they do a lemonade stand and they send out an email to all the staff at Willard. And it's really nice to see the number of people who come. Teachers who aren't working over the summer will just come over just to have lemonade and, and see the, see the students. So it's really, really nice to see. And then they also do a lot of vocational jobs around the school. So they helped Mrs. Chuanai this summer and they did last summer, fill, stuff the first day of school packets. So they put those together and have those ready for the students. So those are some of the things that they do there.
And at McGee, some really nice things is our high school life skills students worked with our Blast students together. And they created like a carnival day where the life skills students were teaching the Blast students some things and vice versa. And they did some cooking together. And they really, really enjoyed kind of that coupling of the two groups together. So that was nice to have that partnership. And we're hoping to continue some of that throughout the school year so they can, you know, form those bonds and kind of have that mentorship going on between the two. The other thing that I, that we piloted this year was in our middle school, we had a number of students who really struggled with some social skills and with some executive functioning. So Christina Giaruso, our school psychologist, kind of piloted a program where we grouped those students together. So they had their regular reading, writing, and math supports that they would have. But we had a daily morning meeting. And we also worked on specific executive functioning, goal setting with them. And then she used a program called Movie Time, where they showed clips, they actually watched the movie Like Mike, but it's all done in a social skill setting. So you're doing little tiny pieces of the movie at a time and then looking at the social skills of the characters and see how they applied to them. And that was a huge hit for those students. And at the same time, they were learning some really great skills. So I'm hoping that we will continue to do that for students that need that next year. So that's, those are a couple of the highlights that we had.
I think one of our biggest challenges continues to be to get our choice students here during the summer. We receive requests from Hartford at the end of February, beginning of March, asking who will be attending summer school. And we get all that paperwork together. We had recommended 18 choice students. 11 came, but I have to say, out of those 11, they weren't consistent. So they might be here one day a week or two days a week, or might have come for a week. There was a lot of trouble with transportation. The parents were really struggling. They had a common, one common pickup and drop-off spot in the city for them. So, which really wasn't working for many of them. We had a lot of conversations with transportation over the course of the summer. So that continues to be a challenge. Our numbers have increased tremendously, the number of choice students who are participating in our extended school year program. But it's not where we want it to be yet.
Does anybody have any questions for us or?
Just a couple of questions. I should probably know this. You have a four-week and a five-week program. How does that work? Parents, are students decide which program or is it recommended?
Recommended.
It's recommended. So our Blast program is our five-week, five-day-a-week program. Most of the other students come four weeks, three days a week.
And then you mentioned transportation for the choice students. Who, who arranges for the transportation?
Hartford. Well, we, yeah, correct.
Correct, yeah.
Correct. So assuming this has been an issue in the past as well?
Yeah, it was a little bit different this year because they used to have bus stops throughout the city and they had one bus stop in one location.
So that was the new part this year.
So it was really difficult for students who lived quite a distance from that stop to be able to get to that bus stop. And we really believe that hindered them being able to participate on a regular basis. So.
Do you believe that crack will go back to having multiple stops next year?
I would certainly hope so. I would hope so. That's part of the conversations we're hoping to have as, we have new AAAs coming this year. So we're hoping to get those conversations going early.
Any other questions?
Well, I actually have a financial question, but I don't know if it's better to ask Linda when she's here or now. If we budgeted for, maybe Brian, maybe you know the answer. If we budgeted, and I think, my memory is, was it 100,000, 80,000 for the summer program? I can't remember the exact number. But if we budgeted for 123 kids. But if we budgeted for 123 kids, we budgeted for 60 teachers and pairs, and we didn't use all that. Was there a balance left over? If we only had 48 teachers and pairs, then we budgeted for 60.
I would have to talk to Linda.
That's why, no, I didn't know the answer.
Because it's not solely, it's a separate line, but it's also transportation.
Okay.
Right. And we didn't budget for 123. That was what we predicted in the spring. So she has her line item.
Right, but the teachers and pairs you must have budgeted for, you wouldn't have had enough money to pay them.
There's a budget, a line item for summer school. We don't know now, when we have to do our budget for next year, how many students we're going to have when we do that in October, November. So, yeah.
We'll get you, what we'll do is, we'll not have an exact number of what was budgeted, and then what the actuals were, paras, teachers, nurse, transportation. We'll give you a listing of what it was.
Do you know, just off the top of your head, if we were under budget or over budget?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that Jeff did not come to me and say, "We have a concern here." So I'm assuming that we're under or at budget, Julia, but...
Good job grabbing the microphone. Very nervous back there. Need to reach for it.
What's that?
Brian is about to grab the microphone.
Marek can handle it. He's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have discussion on the NEAS report.
I have a little PowerPoint.
Yes.
I know.
Slide 1 of 93.
And I want it back now. But I just wanted to point out, I wanted that.
Remember? That's what I was going to do. I'm into that conversation very much. And that's just going to be right now. But that's... You just got to... Correct. Kids, I understand. So you need to look up what your kids, it doesn't really have an impact. 48 to 60?
There's 12. That's 12 steps.
That's it. Significant amount.
She looks familiar.
Do we know you?
Good to have Craig here tonight. Craig turning it off and turning it back on?
I guarantee. Cybersecurity. Craig is our IT director. Yeah, I will say, or security. I figured that, but because of Walker getting hijacked. Yeah, right, no. So I wanted to ask her to talk about the filter thing, how he's going to let you know why he feels comfortable. That's all I want. That's all I want. Because you heard, they got hijacked in the summer. They never reported it to the BLAST. They were just going to pay it. The board that was going to pay it. They voted to pay it.
I'm going to go here, just simply because if I go too far away, it'll like, or won't work. So I believe the NEAS report was linked to what you received. If you had a chance to open it, you'll notice that it was about 115 pages long, so it sure was fantastic reading all weekend long. So basically, tonight, what we just wanted to do was to present a quick summary of the lengthy report. I think before I get into a few of the details, I do want to say, overall, it was a very positive report. It does come back with commendations and recommendations, as every NEAS report does. But overall, we received, we really had very positive feedback when the committee left, believe it or not. It was 10 and a half months ago. We received the report in June, and we're actually really pleased with their findings. And to be quite frank with you, really, the recommendations that we make were really no great surprise. They were things that we somewhat anticipated, and fortunately, they're things that we already have been working on. So just as a reminder, NEASC is for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and the purpose of the accreditation visit is to provide an opportunity for institutions to do a self-reflection and assessment up against their globally recognized standards of excellence. The cell study took place from 2016 through 2018, and the fall, the visit was actually last fall in 2018. So as a reminder, when they come to visit, we actually had, normally it's a team of 16, we actually had a team of 15 that came. They were all educators from the state of Connecticut. And these are the different standards that they take a look at. So we've got our core values, beliefs and learning expectations, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, culture and leadership, and school and community resources for learning. So those are the different areas. When the visiting team comes, they're broken down into pairs. There's two people assigned to each standard, and their job is to basically look at the report, the very lengthy report that we prepared for them, do a number of interviews, as you all remember, having participated in that process last fall. So I wanted to start here with just a reminder that this is what had been worked on prior to the NEAS visit in terms of our core values and beliefs, our academic expectations, and our social and civic expectations. So shortly before the visiting team came, we also, as a district, adopted our Berlin learner outcomes, which is a commendation for us. But we also knew we were at a crossroads here in terms of, we have this at Berlin High School, and now we have this adopted document for the district. So we knew that that would come back as a recommendation, that we do need to reconcile that. And as the district, from a district level, we're continuing to tweak that Berlin learner outcome with just a little bit of the language right now. And once that's in place, we will roll out a process at the high school in order to re-craft our core values and beliefs in line with what will now be the vision of the graduate as we move to, the process for NEAS is a little bit different in the future. So commendations of note. So these were some of the things that really stood out for them. If you go through the report, there are many, many more commendations with regard to all of the things that are going on at the high school. So they talk about the positive impact of the teachers and school counselors, the fact that there was a dynamic process in developing the core values and beliefs, the creation of the district Berlin learner outcomes, our increased PSAT performance, the capstone project, upbeat opportunities for feedback that were put in place last year, the development and calibration of our school writing rubrics, the wide range of opportunities that we offer students in and out of the classroom, the warm and inviting health services office, dedication to communication with parents, our beautiful building renovation, and the dedication of our custodial staff and daily maintenance. So again, there are far more recommendations that were made throughout the report, but these were the ones that actually, when the committee left in October, they provide you with a little bit of a verbal summary, and then you wait a pretty long time to get the report back. And they reiterated these things in the letter that came back to us, and then these are sprinkled throughout the report. So I will, just to let you know that because all of the members on the visiting team were from the state of Connecticut, we actually had several visitors that came back to our building because they were so impressed, not just our facility, but the things that they were seeing in the classroom and some of the work that they were hearing about, that we actually had visits from three or four different schools. People that were on our visiting committee went back to their schools and then brought other members as well as administrators back. And that was really exciting, and it's very validating for our faculty and staff as well as our students. And our visiting committee also talked about what an amazing student body we have. They commented on how kind and respectful and helpful they all were throughout the visit as well. So in terms of recommendations, so the way in which recommendations are broken down, you have to respond at three different points. So one, there's a special progress report, which is due October 1st. You'll be happy to know that, number one, updating school emergency plans we're working on, fortunately, now with the help of our new district director of safety and security. And the other two, we can check them off already. That's designated a school chemical hygiene officer, which we have, but to be honest with you, people in the building couldn't necessarily identify who that person is. We actually work with our science department chair, as well as our head custodial person in terms of being in charge of our chemical hygiene, and then providing access to the safety sheets. So we actually have taken care of those things, so we'll go into the portal, respond to those things. The next set of recommendations, we then have to respond to a two-year progress report, and the ironic thing about that is it's really only one year away, that progress report, by the time we got the report back. But one of the things, in terms of what we need to respond to for the two-year progress report, I actually felt really good about the things, the decisions that we've already made in terms of budgeting and priorities. And you'll see that some of the decisions that you all made as a board are actually in line with what they were recommending as well. So in terms of, we have some things about aligning our learning expectations with the Berlin learner outcomes. We know that's work to come. Right now, we're waiting for sort of the final work to happen at the district level, and then we're going to bring that down to the building level, which I know is going to happen across the district. Connecting written curriculum again with our Berlin learner expectations, again, work that will be in progress. Developing a formal process to assess Berlin High School learning expectations. So when you take a look at the learning expectations, that's different than receiving a grade. It really is more like standards-based and mastery-based grading. That's not to say that we're throwing out our standards grading system, but we are taking a look at more types of mastery-based type learning, and how do we communicate back to students as well as parents? Where are students in terms of the progression when it comes to those particular learning expectations? So we do need to develop some sort of formal process for that, or at least get that process going based up for the two-year progress report. Consistent and dedicated common planning time. I know one of the things that we've been working with Denise on is, some of our challenge is that when we're short on subs, that we oftentimes have to cut into some common planning time. So we've been working with Denise to help increase our sub pool and have more people available when we need coverage so that we can protect that time. We've also talked about perhaps implementing some different models in order to protect that time as well. Formalizing internship and job shadow opportunities and expanding career partnerships. So the financial support and the putting in place the internship coordinator position is really key to that, and we're really excited about that work that's getting off the ground. And then improve the detail and specificity of communications for the community regarding education needs, which, quite frankly, I feel like we saw that all last spring when we went through the budget process. Not so much even from the building level, but really from the board of ed level, the community level, the parents really banding together, you know, and having them work with the school and support staff and central office, as well as board members, in terms of how do we get the word out to people in terms of what our community-based educational needs are. So again, those are things that need to come up in the two-year report. There are some other recommendations, but as I look through the report, these were really some of the bigger areas. Oftentimes, as I said, and when you look at the different standards of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, you'll see recommendations or commendations that actually overlap in those areas, because those things are all very tightly connected. So in terms of next step, we will formalize, I already have solicited volunteers for a NEAS follow-up committee. We will actually review the report in more detail. Basically, what we'll do is, over a multi-year period, a two-year period, we will take a look at each of the different standards, what are the recommendations. You have an opportunity to accept or reject recommendations. Just because they provide you with a recommendation, you have an opportunity to look at it as a school and a district to decide, is that truly the best thing for your school as well as your district in moving forward, and then you respond accordingly. But using the committee, we will use that committee to basically help write the two-year report, and eventually, there's a five-year report that you have to write in which you respond to many more recommendations. But again, we'll review the report in detail, we'll develop ASHA plans to respond to the various recommendations, we'll respond by the deadlines in terms of the report writing. And then we'll begin the process for preparing for a new accreditation process. So there actually is a new accreditation process with NEAS. They've condensed the standards, and the visitation is a little bit different. Aaron, I know, is definitely more well-versed in what the new process is, but because we literally just came out of the old process, we're finishing the old process, and then we'll be trained in the new process. But my understanding is, they're looking at changing the process so that it's not this big rush right at the end, this big two-year thing and this big visit right at the end. There actually is a pre-visit with a smaller committee where you actually work together to talk about what needs to be worked on, and you have two years to work on those things and make progress, and then the committee comes back. But again, I haven't had any training specifically with that just yet, since we're still, we're really on the tail end of the old process when it comes with NEAS. So questions?
Is the follow-up committee, is the same committee that was set in place leading up to this point, or is it, are they different people?
So the committee that's meeting up, we have a steering committee, and then everybody in the school is a part, is on some sort of committee. So it's not necessarily the people that are on the steering committee. I actually asked for volunteers. So I did have a number of people, 10 or 12 people, that volunteered to be on the follow-up committee. Any other questions, concerns?
I think it's important to know that, you know, those that were on the board then, where we were 10 years ago with the NEAS report to where we are now. And, you know, speaking to, Aaron has done a number of visits and is very involved with NEAS. This is really a strong report, and that we are in a good place compared to where we were 10 years ago. And that, part of it was the building, but also the curriculum pieces. Many of those recommendations that were commendations now were recommendations 10 years ago. So to credit to the staff...
The fact that we have Atlas, where our curriculum is in Atlas, our advisory program in the building, just all of the different things.
And it's not something that happens overnight when you have that much. It's really a steady goal, steady measure going forward, of everyone being invested, moving forward. You can't build a curriculum in six months or a year. So hence, over those 10 years, it's really to credit to the staff at the high school and the work they did, and, you know, especially to credit to the staff in preparing and having just a great visit, too. They did a really nice job.
Which happened all before I got here. I literally have to just remind everybody that when I showed up on July 1st. I know, I was like, good timing, right? But I really, I have to commend everybody that was leading the steering committee and all of the work that led up to it, because when I came in, they were just set to go. It was a phenomenal visit. The hospitality group that took care of the actual visit itself, which is so much work. We really received just a lot of praise, positive comments, all the way around.
So Brian's being a little modest in crediting all of the teachers and the staff because it takes leadership at the district level, and he served in that role as assistant superintendent, to get things going, curriculum instructions, that's what I was, to really get things moving that you see threaded all the way through the report in terms of opportunities for teacher learning and the support that they received along the way, and the systems like Atlas that were set up under our...
Well done. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well done. Next item I have on the agenda is discussion on cybersecurity. And honestly, I asked Brian to put this on the agenda after hearing about and reading about one of our neighboring districts who had a lot of their data hijacked this summer. In essence, was hijacked and held hostage, and they were looking for a $10,000 Bitcoin deposit in order to have it released, so forth and so on. That obviously leads us to a whole bunch of questions, like, are we vulnerable? Are we safe? Where do you think we fall? How do we avoid being in the news as one of these districts? And so with that...
Craig, I asked Craig Semansky, our IT director, to come to the board this evening. Obviously, he's going to have much more that he can answer about our cybersecurity than I can. Craig has been an employee in the Berlin Public Schools over 20 years, and am I correct in that?
Yeah.
About 20, right? About 20?
Yeah, it's a 20-year thing.
Yeah, that's what I thought, right? I know you were here with me a long time ago. But, you know, he does a fantastic job, and as he shares, he may not get real descriptive in what we have, but he will answer why we are secure, obviously not to share, you know, exactly what we're doing.
I want you to give all our secrets out, just reassure.
Please, Craig, you can sit down if you'd like and just...
It's like, you know, 20 years, and it's, for me, security in the computer systems has always been priority. And it's the kind of thing that is, you know, someone who knows so much about it, you lose sleep at night, and I'm sure Tim would know as well, that you do the best you can to harden systems from the base, you know, right onto the keyboards, the machines themselves, the network, the perimeter, the firewalls. You know, we have, everything's segmented so that, you know, say, say Brian, for instance, he'll use, if something happens to his computer and he gets that, you know, you've been, you know, give us some money, malware, ransomware, it's called. It's what's going to, you know, he's not going to take down the whole district. We have off-site backup, offline backup by tape in a fireproof box, you know, at another location, so that... Please, Craig, you can sit down if you'd like and just.
It's like, you know, 20 years and it's, for me, security in the computer systems has always been priority. And it's the kind of thing that is, you know, someone who knows so much about it, you lose sleep at night and I'm sure Tim would know as well, that you do the best you can to harden systems from the base, you know, right onto the keyboards, the machines themselves, the network, the perimeter, the firewalls. You know, we have, everything's segmented so that, you know, say, say Brian, for instance, he'll use, something happens to his computer and he gets that, you know, you've been, you know, give us some money, malware, ransomware it's called. It's what's gonna, you know, he's not going to take down the whole district. We have off-site backup, offline backup by tape in a fireproof box, you know, at another location so that, you know, if everything was just zipped up and they were asking for money, I would be able to go to the backup and restore things, which is really key to recovering from these things. It takes some time, but it's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, when I was asked to come here, you know, kind of looking at things that we have to do here. And it's really important, I think, I think we do need more end-user education, you know, the people that are reading their emails all day and it just takes one click on a link in an email that you think's good and it could go south, so. So I can't really say that, nothing's ever 100% sure with these situations, but the systems in the district have been set up so that the impact would be minimized and we'd be able to recover from it.
Can you talk to Craig how you stay current on what's out there and what are potential threats to our system, so?
There's, you know, like I have this notice here from the state, you know, there's, there's all kinds of agencies, government agencies that provide recommendations, best practices, how to secure your systems, how to train your users and let everyone know, you know, as far as keeping the systems updated, patched and, you know, current antivirus and, you know, those same things that have just been something that's been practiced here since I've been here, like is through the years. I guess, you know, it's, any questions specific to, you know, what I could provide?
Yeah, and I'm, so relative to the incident that happened with our kind of neighboring district, right? So they had portions of their data hijacked.
Yep.
Kept teachers from accessing some of their data so that they can move into the school year.
Mm-hmm.
What you just said to me, what I heard, is that you're comfortable that that, while the event may happen, is we have the ability to maintain our data. So they might hold a portion of it hostage, but you have access to it in another way? Is that what I heard?
Yes, yes, basically it's, yeah, hacked up offline, which is the most secure place for it, yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, technology is obviously a non-negotiable in school, in any part of the public world now in life, right? Everybody's got their phone, everything's attached to technology now. And it's something that we talk about at budget time and yet it's kind of one of those hidden costs that people don't really pay attention to. Have you, have we as a board supported the needs of the IT department from this aspect of security to make sure that we are staying current? And I think I know the answer should be no, but.
We, you know, like I said, I've, it's been 20 years and this is like, I wear many hats and it would be nice to have someone taking some of that hat and, you know, be able to focus more on security. You know, when a computer, you know, when you hired a security director, I was like, oh, it'd be nice if there was computer housing, you know, school safety, you know, it'd be nice if there was a computer, you know, secure, someone would be able to focus on those things and just have conversations with everyone, you know, as far as like how we can really make people aware. You know, I feel like, you know, like PD days, I know years ago I used to do a PD on Election Day with Dave Yvonne and we'd always do a couple hours with a group of teachers and just talk about computer security. And that's kind of fallen off the agenda, like, and I feel like there could be more, you know, PD included, which could discuss these things because that's the only, you know, the more the teachers and the staff and the offices especially know, then the better off we'll all, we'll be as a whole, so.
So, and you touched on what I was thinking is, we just hired a security director and that's for the physical safety of our students, right? But there is a whole nother side to that, which is all of the student information and all of their personal information and school information, all that is all over here and we have to make sure that that integrity of that information is also safe. So that, you touched on kind of what I was thinking and we have to think about that as we're moving forward, so.
I have a question. So Craig, you mentioned the importance and you just kind of came back to it of educating the end-users. And so talking about teachers and staff, but also I presume our students because our students are using technology.
Yes, yes.
So what, what do you think are, what, can you tell us what we're doing right now within district and what we could potentially be doing to augment that end-user, you know, engagement with technology?
Like I said, it's, there's, there might be periodic emails from me with describing things, this is happening now, these kind of things are something you need to look for. Whether or not that's assimilated, I can't say. And I know that on the student level, that they're in the middle school and other, all throughout, there are Netiquette-type, you know, kinds of things to look at. I teach them how, you know, to, you know, assess websites, whether they're real or not and, you know, I'm, I'm, I know, I don't know if any of the administrators here would have more information on those types of things that the kids learn.
Ask these guys.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, it probably varies, you know, what they experience, you know, based on which elementary school they're at and I don't think there's any things.
Part of this is really a curriculum issue as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
It's under what our, our computer instructional technology specialists, integration specialists do in each of the buildings. So, and you know that we lost one of those positions in the budget cuts this year, so that is, that makes it more challenging to make sure that we're providing that consistent message across all three elementary schools when we're down a full position in providing those kinds of specific lessons. We do have, particularly at the middle school and the high school where the staffing remained intact.
Right.
We have people, that's part of the digital safety, creating an online profile, understanding sort of basic information about safety in terms of entering information online. Some of it is included in the high school health curriculum actually in terms of sort of the idea that like when you're.
Right.
Messaging with someone, you don't really know who you're messaging with.
Sure.
Because a lot of kids will just accept friend requests from everybody, so they don't know who's on the other line. So we talk about cat fishing and fish, trying to gather the information, that whole notion that sometimes the people are not what they appear to be.
Sure. I think that's important to have it structured and a part of or integrated into curriculum for students. And I wonder, are those building-based or, you know, the staff or distributed maybe not building-based? Are they also providing training for their colleagues in the schools or no?
I think, like, for example, Jen Nero will talk at a staff meeting and might do kind of a tech blip, like for five, 10 minutes about, you know, like whether it's, you know, choosing a good password or just using some kind of a technical thing.
Sure, because it's, I mean, it's ever-changing, right? Ever-expanding.
So we've had past practice of having technology shares. We ran a number of technology professional learning sessions on the PD day in August. You know, one of the things that is a challenge is that we're always competing for those professional learning times. So when we add in things like the session that we just did on food allergies, that took an hour for six.
There's never enough time, I understand, yes.
For the full staff, so we get requests all the time to have, you know, I was just asked to add the stop the bleed training. We were asked to provide CPR training, we're asked to provide transgender training, we're asked to provide, so.
Even traffic.
That makes it a challenge.
Yeah.
But it's not that it's not necessary, we have to look for opportunities.
Sure, yeah, right.
Do we ever really get 100% turnout with any of those sessions?
For some sessions, like the food allergy sessions, that was a required session for everyone, we offered it to everyone at the same time. So we do have that ability to mandate sessions, but whenever we do that, we're making a decision not to do something else that tends to be used for.
So just something at my workplace that they began doing, because it's difficult to get 100% compliance and reaching everyone, is just at their own time, everyone who needs to use the computer system will take a training course at their own time. It's like a 10, 15-minute piece where they could see some of these things, talking about, you know, phishing and social engineering and all these. And then there's a quiz on that and if you don't pass the quiz, you lose access to the system. You could retake it until you do it.
So we have that system in place for mandated reporter training for bloodborne pathogens. So we could consider adding in a module.
Yeah, that's funny, I was thinking of something about that earlier, like if it was in that type of delivery, we're watching informational video and answering questions. The other option, I know there's services that will send fake emails to, you know, a group of users and see if they clicked, you know, just kind of provide interactive testing of your users. And I know some districts in the state do do that. There was some interesting discussion recently because there's been so much of this going around as far as what other districts do.
Okay. Brian, you brought this up.
Just that in years past, in order to get everyone's level with technology up to a certain level, we had, you know, at one time, four different tech share days, where half, more than half the day was tech shares and there were some consistent threads without. But the capacity that the newer staff come in with and the other staff, we've built their capacity up, we've now shifted to the other areas of needs and not, not as much. So we went from five, I think, to three and the two tech share days. So there's been a shift in just that lop of a time, so.
Just a quick question. You mentioned, now that we have a new security director in Berlin, are you saying that you wouldn't mind having a cybersecurity director for the town of Berlin? Did I hear that correctly? Like, is that a position that would be utilized?
I, I think, you know, like, that's basically what I'm, part of my job now, but it's, you know, there, if there was someone that would, you know, be able to, you know, because I have so many tasks that I do.
But if they were dedicated specifically for one.
You know, someone who could do system administration and security, it would be, you know.
Doesn't, I don't think it necessarily needs to be a director level, a person, but somebody in the IT department whose primary focus is cybersecurity and cyber. My question was, if there was a position like that, is it something that would, it'd be full-time or is it something where we go out to three or four other towns and say, hey, if everyone puts in a portion of money, you can fund one person, but I don't know if it's compatible district to district depending on your systems.
Let me give you a, for instance, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong.
Or even district to town.
So Craig really helped determine the camera system that's going to be used, which cameras to purchase and all that, so we don't have a, you know, a third party that we're dealing with. So the amount of time that you spent doing that, where it was other things, but the cost savings was huge to us and the effectiveness of the system is going to be much greater than if it wasn't around. So whether it's a shift in his responsibilities or there's another person for certain aspects to free him up to do that, I think either one would work. I know that the town spoke of having a security director that would chair the BOE and the town, that would, and then still have the other position. So that might be something to look at, even just within Berlin, because, you know, you have your own IT help at the media, at the library, you have the IT at the police station, all IT at the council. So there's, you know, there's a lot of, and, you know, credit to the staff here that I know that when sometimes things get a little sticky, the staff here definitely pitches in, you know, the others.
Any other questions for Craig? Craig, thank you very much for being here tonight and answering any of our questions. You did make me feel a little bit better that we're not going to get that magic message. And if we do, you know, you're on top of it.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Next up, I asked Brian to give us kind of an update on the rollout of the food allergy regulation, administrative regulations that we went through earlier this year, just to kind of give us feedback of what he got, what he got back from parents, teachers, you know, whoever, just so that we're aware because it is going to be the year one of these new stronger regulations. And as I keep saying to Brian is, we need to get through year one, right? You got to get through the first year and then people understand what it is, but it's the first year is going to be the hardest. So Brian?
I know in June, I thought we had things in a good place where we drafted and it wasn't the policy, really was the regulation. And within that, we had the seven allergens and we moved forward with that. And my intent was to send something out in July, beginning of August. But as more people looked at the regulations, administration, and then eventually amidst the summer, the school nurses started to look at them, they brought up some concerns. One of it, one of the concerns were that wheat, milk and eggs were on, could not be in any of the snacks that would be in the class, which that kind of eliminated many of the snacks. And one of the nurses said, Brian, you're going to have a problem with just what snacks we brought in the classroom. So we decided to eliminate those and make them allowable in the classroom. And so with that, teachers also met and had some input with it. So the letter did not go out at the time, as timely as I'd like, it went out the night before school. So I got, I got about five emails on that, I responded to them, apologized and told them that I would gladly, you know, we had a provision, I credit the elementary principals, got, got back together with the staff, they had allowable snacks just in case students didn't have snacks, that was in my message to the parents. And so the first day seemed to go very well. I received only about five phone calls, most of the phone calls did not have to do with the snack policy, they had to do with the birthday celebrations. There's concern about not allowing the cupcakes into the schools. What's, as interesting is many of the people I spoke to, those five people, a couple of them worked in school districts and they've changed their policy years ago to no longer have cupcakes in the building or any food for birthday celebrations. So I think people understand the potential harm to students, not just from the ingestion of the food, but also the emotional harm that can cause to a student who's not, who's excluded. I just think it's going to be a time for readjustment. So we've looked to offering other activities, whether it be a craft, bringing someone into school, you know, to read a book to the class, donate a game for indoor recess, something else that's not food to celebrate a birthday. I met with the Willard faculty today to just share with them about the regulation and to get their feedback and it seemed to go very well. I'll meet with Hubbard and Griswold within the next few weeks. The other, the other piece is, unless last Friday, I did one more update to the regulation. The one part that I wasn't aware of is that soy, not soy as itself as soy, but soy oil and soy lecithin, I believe is how you say it. And that is very prevalent in goldfish, crackers, so there was many snacks that were eliminated based on prohibiting soy in general. So made another adjustment and said soy can be eaten in the cafeteria as any food item can, but as a snack, we're going to allow soy oil and soy lecithin to be in, be in items that are in the classroom. The other piece is that anaphylactic shock is typically, is not typically, it typically doesn't occur because of soy or so those soy byproducts. So the notion of life-threatening because of it on the spot with anaphylactic shock is not prevalent. So I did get a few emails, thank you very much, much appreciated. And that came with a sample snack list of about 20 items, some of the items that are most common for students, students do bring to school. So that's really where it's at at this point. I don't know, I know that I, I did receive feedback, just seeing people in the community about it and some very positive and some, and some concerned about, again, the birthdays. So I think that, as Matt said, it'll be, it'll be a transition. So I think it's a transition that's occurred in multiple surrounding towns and districts right next to us and it's probably taken place, you know, five or six years ago. I think we're a little behind as far as, you know, changing our regulation and the whole bringing food in for birthdays, so.
I think it's important that everybody realize that this is about students, it's a safety issue, it's student safety, not just we're anti-cupcakes. So, any questions on this topic? Okay. The next item is a ratification of a contrast for the clerical group with an executive session anticipated. So before we get there, I just want to thank the administrators for being here tonight and I also want to thank you for all of your updates that you gave us about the opening of your school year. I got the red. I got to read, it sounds like all of you got off to a great start this year, we're really happy about that and excited for you for the school year, so thank you for your efforts to not only provide us with that report of what's going on, but also for being here for tonight, so thank you. With that said, we will need to enter an executive session to go over the negotiations for the clerical group. We would like to invite Brian and Denise.
We'll enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, inviting the superintendent and the director of human resources.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by, I think I heard Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at...